One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have five items on the agenda. Item number one is the minutes of the August 19th meeting. Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Item number two is a resolution authorizing the transfer of YARC funds for payment of expenses with a presentation by Jay Chambeau. Good evening, Jay.
Good evening, everyone. So this is a transfer request. Mary Fleegle with the Special Olympics program has $1,000 in expenses for the local Special Olympics program, and these proceeds came into the YARC funds through the former Jam for Kids event that was held out at Regner. So those funds have been hanging out there for a while. They haven't been expended in some time. I think 2013 is what I've checked on as far as when they've last been expended. So this is a request to transfer $1,000 from that amount. So it would leave the balance of $6,900 in the YARC fund for the future.
Thanks, Jay. Any comments or questions for Jay?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Item number three is a fire department sale of a used fire truck with presentation by Chief Kudick. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. You have a memo before you. I can just highlight a couple of things on it. As you know, in August of 2020, we received our new fire engine, the 2020 Pierce, which makes our 1999 E1 no longer needed. We did put it out for sale on a website that sells used fire trucks. We did it, we thought we did it early enough, so we priced it a little high. Turns out, we priced it way high, and it didn't get any inquiries. And so over the next three or four months, we kept lowering it and lowering it and still got no inquiries on it. So tonight, we're recommending that it goes to auction, Wisconsin Surplus Auction, I believe, is what vehicle maintenance will use, and we'll sell it there.
Thanks, Chief. Any comments or questions for the Chief at all?
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Item number four is a resolution for acceptance of a FEMA grant. Again, Chief Kudick.
Good evening again. Yes, we're very excited to announce that tonight that we received the $186,000 Aid to Assistance Firefighters grant. Battalion Chief Gustafson led the charge on this grant. He did an excellent job. It's a very competitive grant. Over the years, we've probably written at least one or two grants a year out of this fund. And I think in the last 10 years, we've probably received two or three grants. So it was very rewarding to see that we got it. It's very exciting. It's for a vehicle exhaust capture system. What it does is hoses hang down from the ceiling on tracks. They hook up to our exhaust systems. When the fire truck starts up and drives out the building, the exhaust stays with the fire truck as it drives out the building. And when it gets to a door, the magnetic clamp is released, dropping the hose off, and the fire truck goes out the door. Same thing when it comes back from a call, it's backed up to the door, the exhaust pipe is hooked up to the vent system. It backs in, it slides along the track, and then it'll exhaust the fumes. We think this is huge for cancer reduction. It's one of the leading causes now of firefighter deaths is cancer. We believe this will help enormously. So we're excited. You'll see that it was a $186,000 project. The AFG grant is a 10% match program, so 169 and change will come from FEMA. And then we're asking the city for just under $17,000 for the 10% match.
Thanks, Chief. Any comments or questions for the Chief?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Chief, and special thanks to the battalion chief for all his hard work on that grant.
Pass it on.
Thanks. Finally, item number five is to announce a special finance committee meeting for Monday, September 16th. Again, it'll be, we say 6:00 PM? I believe it was 6:00 PM. So 6:00 PM on Monday, September 16th, 2019. We'll be sending out the agenda here shortly, so keep your calendars open. Being no further business before the finance committee, I adjourn.
Thanks, Rich. The council can probably come on up, and we'll hit licensing here next. I would like to call the City of West Bend Licensing Board for Monday, September 9th, 2019 to order. Recognize that we have two items on tonight's agenda, the first being approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of August 19th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number two is approval of operators licenses with the list that was in our packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. And being there no further business before the licensing board, I adjourn. And we'll hold tight until we get one more alderman here tonight.
That could be embarrassing.
We are back. Good evening again. Like to call the City of West Bend Common Council for Monday, September 9th, 2019 to order, and recognize that we do have a quorum this evening with Alderman Chevalier and Alderman Kiss absent and excused. I move ahead to item number one as a proclamation for the Kettle Marine YMCA's 50th anniversary, and it reads, "Whereas, the Kettle Marine YMCA has been a valuable part of our community since it was established in 1969. And whereas, the Kettle Marine YMCA aspires to deliver positive change by working side by side with neighbors to create opportunities for everyone to learn, grow, and thrive. And whereas, this year marks the 50th anniversary of the Kettle Marine YMCA. Now therefore I, Craig K. Sedanico, Mayor of the City of West Bend, along with the members of the Common Council, commend and congratulate the Kettle Marine YMCA on 50 years of strengthening our community. I hereby proclaim Sunday, September 22nd to be Kettle Marine YMCA Day, and I encourage all citizens to celebrate with the YMCA by attending their 50th anniversary picnic on Sunday, September 22nd at Regner Park. Congratulations and thank you to the Y. Jenny, thanks for turning out tonight. Good stuff. Please pass along our well wishes." Moving ahead to item number two is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of the Common Council from August 19th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Items three through six are under the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Under items, agenda items for consideration is item number seven, an ordinance amending section 17.11, parent three, parent F, of the municipal, the municipal code regarding modifications for accessory structures. And we have a presentation tonight by Mark Petrovich. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening. The code amendment in front of you is the result of a request by a constituent of Alderman Model who asked us to consider alterations to the code. Currently, the code does not, our zoning code does not permit accessory structures on corner lots because of the definition of a yard or side yard on corner lots. The code amendment basically would allow such structures within a side yard of a single-family or two-family residential lot within the city, whether it's a corner lot or not, which is a revision, a reversion back to the way it was up through the 90s in the city. We asked that the Plan Commission take a look at this. They discussed it twice. We've had a number of requests to amend this code. And basically, the code change would allow these structures in the rear yard as they do right now by right. They would allow them in a side yard with a site plan approval. That site plan approval would be simply looking for things like if it's a shed and can be screened, we'd ask that the increased visibility be addressed with that screening. If it can't be screened, such is the case with the detached garage where you have a driveway connection directly to the street, we ask for compatibility of building materials with the surrounding buildings. Doesn't have to be the same, but compatible, so we don't get unusual requests for unusual materials. We basically would be allowed to consider the site plan administratively under the code, as was recommended by the Plan Commission. However, if the item was contentious or the applicant disagreed with us as a staff, we would still have the ability to take it to Plan Commission to have the determination made. We think it gives better use of the land. Plan Commission did recommend for the amendment.
Thank you, Mark. Thanks also to staff. I know you guys put some time in researching this, and as you mentioned, the Plan Commission looked at this. I think we had a discussion and talked about at least two more times, I believe, right?
Two meetings and a public hearing, yes.
Awesome. Thanks again. Any questions from the council for Mark?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Go build some sheds, folks. Item number eight, under closed session, is entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to state statute section 19.85, parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Purchase agreement with new perspectives regarding TIF number 12.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Stephanie, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Butchlook.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins.
Aye.
Alderman Caston.
Aye.
Alderman Hugaster.
Aye.
Alderman Mottle.
Aye.
Motion carried.
We are in closed session, and we'll be back in a few minutes to take action on item number nine.